We'll call this meeting to order, and we will start with the invocation and pledge. And if any council member would like to leave the invocation, I'd be grateful.
Lord, we are so thankful for today. We're thankful for the many blessings you've given to us. We pray that you will watch over us, keep us safe, keep us free from pettiness, and with our city in mind. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Can I get a roll call, Javonna?
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Here.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
All right, a few announcements from the city. Coming up on April 25th through the 28th, we'll have our usual city cleanup. Dumpsters will be over at Public Works Building, and we'll have an extra trash pickup on Saturday, April 27th. As usual, this is only open to city residences, residents. May 7th will be our next caucus meeting of City Council. That'll be at 6:30 over at Council Chambers. May 14th, we'll have our events planning meeting at 6:15 here at the Senior Center. And then following the events planning, we'll have our council meeting at 7 o'clock here. Can I get approval of the agenda?
Second. Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. And we had quite a few meetings last month. Can I get approval on those minutes? And if you'd like, guys would like to combine, that's an option.
A motion to combine and approve.
A second.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to move into citizen comments first. Anyone from the community would like to speak tonight? Mark?
Yes, sir. I came to write a letter to the council. I'll just read it if I may. A couple of weeks ago, I verbally presented to the council as our bones of municipal experience and from the citizens of the city. We had a council hire a city manager. The official title for this position would be city administrator. Through research, and I hope it's right, I have learned that the city administrator in Kentucky earns an average of $50,000 per year. The range is 45 to 56 according to my research. The salary is dependent on the city and on considerations of its education, experience, and qualifications. Education and experience might be in the form of a course on civil engineering or municipal law, or park development, and/or having served cities requiring services. Examples of cost for other Kentucky cities are Alexandria, their administrator is about $52,470. The same for Florence. Now, Monticello and Somerset is around $50,000, and over here in Union is $52,400. So needs and expectations of the position can be determined by the council or a committee selected by the council. This committee can be made up of elected officials or citizens of the job of approving the position through city ordinance, rest square on the council, as does the funding for the position. I know that work on the new budget will be coming up soon. The 24, uh, 25 budget is quickly approaching, and funding must be included in the new budget if the council is able to create a position. It is the hope and the desire of myself and current former mayors who have spoken, councilmen and county officials, that the council will act quickly to provide as much need as possible. As you know, this position does not eliminate or alter the mayor's office or affect the council in any other way than to make the job much easier for the people holding this position by having a degree, full-time person overseeing the operations of the city and acting as a liaison between the city and the school and business community, as well as other counties, cities, and states. To help facilitate the ordinance, the city can request copies of the ordinances that other cities have used to create their city administrative position, such as Alexandria or Union listed above. I just want to thank you for your prompt attention to this matter, and I'm hoping that someone on the council will request this be initiated at the start. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Councilman Larson, members of council, citizens, all. As you will no doubt recall, in October of 2023, I came before you all and presented some information, which of course has resulted in a lot of the discussions and the meetings of the minutes that you've approved tonight. Kind of that was the genesis of a lot of this, and expressing my feeling as a lifelong resident of the community that I felt like I was being targeted by my city government. Tonight, I'm here once again on that matter, having been contacted by my tenant, Mr. Weddington, today, who yesterday went to City Hall to inquire regarding why the city landscaping, which is on the western side of Main Street, there in front of the parking lot, an ATM machine, and next to the bank building and the bakery, is being neglected by the contractual employees that maintain all of the other landscaping up and down Main Street. If you go up and down Main Street, you can look at the eastern side of Main Street, all those flower beds have been weeded and trimmed and are ready for planting. Mr. Weddington contacted me tonight just before I came to the meeting. He went to City Hall personally to speak to the clerk. My understanding from him, and you can correct the record, Javonna, that you did not speak to him, but got on the telephone, and Katie handled that, and he was told someone would get back to him. That has not happened. So let me, for the record, and for many of you that may not know, those planters were the product and the brainchild of former council and Mayor Phil Turzoff. Those were all installed when the stamp sidewalks and all that initiative was done. Mayor Turzoff approached property owners, soliciting their permission to create these planters. This is an informal agreement. There was no easement stunt or anything of that nature. But again, as business owners and good citizens, we agreed to allow part of our properties to be used for the creation of those flower beds for the beautification of the city, with the expectation that the city would maintain them, which they have done all these years. That particular stretch on the western side of Main Street has been maintained by the city workers or the city employees or the city contractors all these years until this controversy all cropped up regarding the fence, the banners, and what I consider to be the targeting. Now, as I told you all at the time, back in October, it really is distressing as a citizen to have to come up here and address these issues, which you all drive up and down Main Street every day. Councilman Gaskell, you made the comments last meeting that Main Street was so dirty, you wanted to have a work crew. Well, the fact of the matter is, is as far as I'm concerned, and now Mr. Weddington's bringing it to the city's attention, as a many, many decades old businessman, whose reputation is certainly unimpeachable, and it's not being addressed. So it's not my desire, or in fact, my nature, to continue to be litigious in any way. But the bottom line is, is this council needs to get this situation under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
I'd like to call up on what Mr. Palmer had said. You know, the city has grown through the years, potentially. Some of you in here, you know, who have been around for a while and into, and the rest of them, that I would concur to what Mark has said, that maybe council ought to look at having somebody full-time. You know, through the years, we've had, we've had mayors that have been up here that work full-time jobs, and it's, and it's tough for somebody full-time to be able to do what they need to do unless they take off work, which could create problems. And every one of you up there work full-time jobs also. And I, and I would concur what Mark said. I think a city count, city administrator is something that maybe council needs to look into. You know, $50,000, if that's what the average salary is, you know, I would say that the city could afford that and at least have somebody here because this town is growing so fast. You know, we need, we need somebody to be able to meet with property all the time. And maybe the mayor not happy to take off work or meet late in the afternoon or even council member. I know you all live in Dallas, but this town is getting so good, and it's growing, and we need, I think we need somebody to be up here every day, see the day-to-day operations. As Mark said, I mean, we, we have looked into it when I was in council, and we just, we just couldn't get it, we couldn't get it passed, you know, for, for reasons that we don't know many too. But I, I think it would, it would be good for council to, to look into that. And I know, like Mark said, we, we know your all's budget's coming up, and we may not be able to do nothing right away to get something into the budget. But something that you all look at would be, would be a good problem. Again, thank you all for doing what you all are doing. It's a thank this guy, you know, being far, far ahead in that position. You know, it's a thank this guy, you know, that tough guy. And I'm just going to tell you all, keep doing what you're doing. I support you all for what you're doing. And most of you, if you've been on Facebook, I mean, some of you have been, not personally, the council has been helping you with, with continuing to do what you're doing, and you'll like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Anyone else? All right, nothing?
Maybe.
Okay. Sure, you got it. Wayne?
No, sir.
All right. All right, we'll move on to Sheriff's Department. You guys got to leave tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Good to be with y'all. Council has copied my report, but for the benefit of the audience, there was 992 law enforcement events logged in the city of Walton in March 2024. Some of those include the following. Deputies responded to 12 911 hangups, 20 alarm drops, three animal complaints. Deputies investigated 21 automobile accidents. They logged 32 business checks. Attempted service of 41 civil or criminal offenses. They responded to 20 domestic disturbances. Seven reports of intoxicated persons. Seven emotional crises. Four juvenile trouble calls. They handled four motorist assists. One report of an overdose. Seven requests for information. 495 spot checks were logged. Deputies investigated 15 suspicious activity reports. They investigated three theft reports. I believe two of the three were at commercial establishments, like truck stop or garage. Twenty-six traffic complaints were logged. Deputies conducted 48 traffic stops. Twelve vehicle complaints. We unlocked six cars. Three calls of wanted persons, and all told, they issued 59 citations and made nine arrests. Any questions I can answer?
Major, is a traffic complaint initiated by a citizen?
Generally, it is, yeah. That's where a member of the community calls. Like Councilwoman Palmer actually initiated one of them. But, but yeah, so, so that's definitely citizen generated. And then, you know, we monitor, monitor that for, for additional enforcement. And, and in some, some cases, it requires, like, sometimes it's an engineering problem. So we end up working on that with the city or county engineers as well.
Gotcha. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chief Fess is not present tonight. Heard he's under the weather. So, Matt Bogan?
Evening, everybody. So our updates on the bridge project. I talked to the representative at Duke Energy this afternoon. He said they got their plan sent to Norfolk Southern last month. They haven't heard anything back yet, but they'll keep you posted when they, they receive comments. Got the bid specs ready to go on our resurfacing project, although Jerry asked me to add one more thing on there, so I'll, I'll add that real quick tomorrow, and we'll get that posted. Hopefully, we have the bids back before next month's council meeting, or the contract. Also, we're finalizing our annual, annual report to Division of Water for our storm water efforts last year. Biggest thing we accomplished was mapping the storm sewer across the city. We already had maps for the water, the sanitary sewer, but didn't have storm water yet, so it'd be good to have that reference. Also, you know, getting more public involvement in just, you know, calling and, you know, reporting drainage issues in the neighborhoods, or, you know, there's something going on on the construction site that needs attention. So, you know, it's good that we're getting the word out there that the public knows how to, you know, how to reach us and how to, you know, bring this to our attention for response. So anybody that's not aware, if it, you know, drainage issues, you know, whether that's maintenance on a storm sewer or, you know, yard flooding or whatever, you can call either City Hall or Public Works. We'll check it out. If it's something on a construction site, you know, if they're tracking mud out into the road, if they're, you know, the work's getting outside of the area where it's supposed to be, and there's, you know, mud or debris, whatever, they can go to code enforcement or myself. There's also a reporting tool at the city website. If you go to the stormwater page, there's just a quick thing you can fill out to report any issues. So, and then, you know, Jerry and I have been talking and noticed some areas, you know, culprits that are in need of repair and stuff like that. So, you know, as the budget allows, we'll take care of those through the summer. Any council questions? Counselors?
Just what street or what did you add to the bid package?
It's over on Old Nicholson where they're doing foresting. There's just a section that where they're, it's on the edge of the road, it's doing, so it'll be a cleaner job. We have the contract to do it, just do a whole batch.
Is that last one?
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Moving on to the first item of business tonight. Ordinance number 2024-02: Consideration of overriding mayor's veto. An ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, creating a new section of Chapter 36 of the City of Walton Code of Ordinances in order to adopt a policy for the use of city credit cards by city employees, officers, and elected officials. Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council. There is a lot of confusion surrounding this ordinance. You all adopted this ordinance last month. It was reported at the last meeting that the mayor vetoed the ordinance, but that he did not send a, a message back to council explaining the reasons why. I talked to him today. He said he didn't intend to veto it, thought he signed it. We can't find the signed copy. So it would have gone into effect 10 days after you all approved it. But if you want to clear up the record, you can go ahead and vote to override the veto, just if you want to.
Just so we're all clear, when he vetoes, it's a stamp. When he signs, he signs. So just so that we're all clear. I don't know how that can be confused. But I motion to pass.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item. Ordinance 2024-05. This is the second reading. An ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, amending Section 31.03 subsection F of the City of Walton Code of Ordinances in order to revise the policies and procedures for the timing of payment of compensation for the mayor and members of city council. Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's the title. By summary, you can see on the ordinance that what is proposed here is to reduce the options for payment to the mayor and council of three, three different options down to two options. The once-a-month option would be deleted by operation of adopting this ordinance, so that it is reduced to two options. One is once a year to be paid in November, or two, and two semi-annual lump sum payments, one at the first June City Council meeting, the other at the first November City Council meeting. That is an option that's already here. And then the addition of paragraph three to that ordinance would be as follows. "In no event shall an elected official be paid in advance of the date set forth in this ordinance, or in any additional amount other than has been earned at that pay date." So that's second reading. You all can debate, deliberate, and if you'd like to adopt this ordinance, you can do that by motion.
Motion. Second. Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Third item tonight. Ordinance 2024-06. This is the first reading. An ordinance of the city of Walton, Kentucky, creating a new section of Chapter 36 of the City of Walton Code of Ordinances in order to adopt a policy for the use of city-owned real estate, buildings, and improvements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of council. This ordinance, the main part of it's on the first page, so I'm just going to read it. It's, it reads as follows. "All city-owned real estate buildings and improvements shall be used solely for public purposes. A. There shall be no storage or overnight parking of privately owned vehicles, boats, trailers, campers, motorhomes, recreational vehicles, or other non-city-owned or leased equipment in or on city-owned real estate buildings or improvements. B. There shall be no sleeping, camping, or overnight stays in or on city-owned real estate buildings or improvements. C. Any violation of this ordinance is hereby classified as a civil offense, subject to the city's code enforcement procedures as set forth in Sections 34.65 through 34.77 of the City of Walton Code of Ordinances. Two. Further, any violation of this ordinance by a city employee, officer, or elected official will result in disciplinary action and possible dismissal and/or legal action. Three. Further, any violation of Section A of this ordinance will result in the city having the offending vehicles, boats, trailers, campers, motorhomes, recreational vehicles, or other non-city-owned or leased equipment removed from the city-owned real estate building or improvement at the cost and expense of the owner." That is the reading of the text of the ordinance. I understand that there may be an amendment proposed.
Yes, I would like to propose an amendment to where B, "There shall be no sleeping, camping, or overnight stays." I want an amendment that says, except for weather-related and other emergency instances, when the, when our workers are having to be out there for hours and hours and hours and hours fixing our roads, sometimes they need rest for safety's sake.
I will, we need a second. Yeah, that would, we'll consider that a motion. The sponsor of the ordinance may have something to say, whether that's a friendly amendment or not.
That would be me. And, and I would say that the bed in the Public Works building has been used for other things in emergency situations, to my knowledge. So personally, I, I feel like, and we had this discussion, I feel like if our city workers are working long hours for snow removal, that we look at that, we cut those hours back. And Matt, you spoke from experience. I've never removed snow. And you were speaking of whiteouts and how that messes with your vision and how, you know, it, it could be difficult. I don't see any, did any different. If I'm working a six-hour snow removal, we reduce that down to five hour, and to drive home is the same difference as me spending an hour out there doing snow removal. So personally, I don't feel like there should be a bed in any of our city buildings. When the bed's there, it opens up the opportunity for it to be misused. And I, I think many of us are aware of its misuse.
Can I come and come back?
Absolutely.
So I know we're just opposite because I remember I stayed here. The city will be good at whatever you're doing, and you can have a little sleep before daylight. So I didn't take account of some of the part of it. And I leave, I don't know if the weather will be. So I'll stay here until the daylight starts, see if it becomes better than it is to rent my way home. So I don't feel good in asking an employee to go home and go to bed when you can go right here and be safe, especially if you don't work through 12 hours.
Well, and, and, and
Well, and that's the point. Like, if the shift is too long, then we need to cut the shifts back. But it's, it's the same as calling the employee in. If you're coming from Canton
County, is there not danger? Is there not danger when you're coming to work? You know? So what's the difference in leaving work? I mean, you're, you're traveling both ways.
Because when you leave, you have a choice of when you leave. When you work, you probably see you're going to come in and go home. That's the point.
And you don't know what kind of weather has happened since you've been there, whether your roads that you're going home on are as clean as the ones you've just got finished cleaning.
Well, you're very well aware of the weather because you've been out removing the snow for hours. As you said, 10 to 12 hours.
You're well aware of the weather of the place that you're at, of the, of the land that you're at, not different roads, different places.
Mark, can I comment?
Excuse me, I remember a couple of occasions when the crew had worked all day, and a storm came in late in the day, and they would go get late, sometimes all night long, depending on the weather situation. So maybe the bed could be removed, but some kind of pot could be bought for the crew for their own safety, because they had to be back on that work within a few hours.
Well, I'm just curious how that looks when there's one bed and we've got four men, right? What, what does that look like?
That's what I'm saying. Maybe that could be removed, and some pots could be purchased for, I mean, if you've got the space over there.
It is safety first, but my only point is that it's been abused. And I'm not saying it's been abused by the public workers. I'm, I'm not saying exactly who it's been abused by, but to my knowledge, it's been abused. We've, unfortunately, we have to write an ordinance for people not to sleep in our public buildings, right? So that's where we're at.
I understand. I was going to say, there are, there are occasions when, when the main's crew is working all day, and then because of timing that upstorms are working late into the night. Something, one night, I remember they worked all day. Someone was working all night.
That's why I'm specifically asking for emergencies.
If it was an emergency situation, do you really want to make the call if it was that bad? Not to eliminate just anybody going in there and taking advantage of the situation.
You just, I don't want people to get in trouble who are needing to rest.
And to my knowledge, this is something common across every city, is they all have a, they provide a place for their plow guys. And Jerry, I think what you're saying, you know, like, you start your day on a normal shift, storm comes in, like, you can't just take off that day to rest after the snow. You got to do your normal job, then you got to plow, and then you got to do your normal job the next day. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So that was not a friendly amendment? Okay. So what happens on not friendly? I don't, I don't mean to be flip, but
No, I, I mean, I'm not going to disagree that safety first, but I want to acknowledge, and I want everyone to understand that the bed inside that building's been abused. And the, whether there's a bed or not, we, we've had elected public officials or even city workers sleeping inside our public buildings, not snow-related. So that's my whole point of the ordinance. Our public buildings are not meant for elected officials or for city workers to find an alternate place to stay when it's convenient, outside of, I hear you loud and clear, and I do believe safety first, so.
So, I mean, if we go forward with this amendment, I can draft some language
So, I mean, if we go forward with this amendment, I can draft some language and send it out and get something that'll accomplish both goals, I think.
That's fair.
So we would go ahead and vote on the amendment, and then vote on first reading, if you like, and then before second reading, I'll develop the language, unless you want to start over with first reading next time, after you see it.
I think we can adjourn, too.
Yeah, I think we can move as well.
Okay. I'll second, Councilman Long's motion for amendment.
Could that language be very specific, sir?
Yep.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Okay, now you typically vote on first reading, if you'd like to do that, you can do that as amended now.
Motion.
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We'll have a revised ordinance at next month's meeting. You guys like to go into council comments and mayor comments before possible closed session, or do we want to stick with the order?
I'm, I'm, I do need Jerry, so I'll just wait and manage this.
You lost me there, Matt. So you're saying stick with the...
Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is possible closed session pursuant to KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection F. Discussions or hearings which might lead to an appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee, member, or student without restricting that employee's, members, or student's rights to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussion of general personnel matters in secret. I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Dan and Jerry, for Dan and Matt.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherry Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, you're welcome to hang out outside till we're finished up, or if you guys want to hit the road, I'm sure. And, uh...
Major Mark!
I asked major to hang around in case there was any difficulties.
If we were gonna need to be arrested or something?
If, you mean if Matt stomped out?
No, no, before the meeting.
I didn't do nothing, Mark.
I didn't expect you to still hang around, but, sorry.
I thought we was getting some update on that.
Yeah.
I'm tickled at this point.
That nobody got arrested?
Well, no, but...
We don't know, maybe.
And I know that, right?
We all good?
Yeah, so now we'll go into council comments. Rose?
I don't have anything.
Amy?
She's in the bathroom.
Oh, I'm sorry. God, it's quiet.
Make that what she's gonna say first.
Amy, any council comments tonight?
You fixed your hair.
I pulled my hair down. Uh, there's nobody, but, thank you, everybody, for showing up. Thank y'all for sticking around.
Yeah.
Terry?
Major Mark, thank you for sticking around, it's always nice seeing you here, and our trusty and dedicated videographer.
And you guys.
We've been working you all hard.
I'm good, thank you very much.
Matt?
Good to go.
Good, no, I don't have anything, thank you, Major Mark, for overtime tonight, and...
He is not mad.
He's like, if I'm gonna stay, I at least want to arrest somebody, but, yeah.
Anybody got any questions?
All right, I don't have anything either, so...
She's got a question.
Oh, yes.
Is there anything anyone can share about the closed session topic, or when something will come out about what was discussed?
The only thing discussed was continuing council's investigation, and as that, the investigation is still open and pending, we don't want to get into specifics at this point, but we definitely need to do our due diligence, to be fair to the citizens of the city and to the mayor, and until that investigation is concluded or the next steps become apparent, right now, that's gonna, I'll stay pretty quiet.
Cut.
Yeah, thanks.
Did you say cut?
Yeah.
I did.
Next steps as an impeachment? I don't want to interpret...
I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, so, no comment at this time.
That's all that's gonna be said on this topic.
Okay.
Tonight.
How long is this building gonna be open? Is it...
This particular building?
Yeah.
We're gonna lock the door in about three minutes.
As there's light.
Yeah.
You're good? Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Paige.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I was supposed to, I was supposed to motion before I stood up, right?
No, you're right.
We can't, if you want to stay...